...for the rest of the...
That's wrong. I tell you what, I'm hoping from there.
My thought was after government space, how much space is left in this building to be utilized and be de-styled or used to be able to some type of meeting?
I don't know. Okay. He's asking how much square footage is left in the building right now where we could possibly rent out if somebody does show some kind of interest. As far as having that number, I don't have it. Here are the proximates. I would say that the offices upstairs and downstairs, that we in the building was 25,000 square foot, 25,000 to 28,000, and we're probably occupying a little over half of that right now. Obviously, this is a large space here. This is the space that, you know, wouldn't be my understanding, like renting out to anybody on a permanent basis. This is something like, that was just like the meeting here and meeting there. They were, they had already come in and looked at Food Pantry. Obviously, we do have a kitchen available for Meals on Wheels if that does happen, and it seemed like all that was gonna be able to fit in the space that they were already showing.
Do you need me to help you out on the, obviously, this space to be utilized in this bottom part? It's probably left to be utilized as well.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, this is, like I said, the kitchen was already looked at by Meals on Wheels, and it seemed like it would be a fit. Food Pantry did look at the space over here on the south side of the building, and it does look like it would be something that they could come in and handle their operations with that. Next question.
So, yes, my name is Lisa Biggins, and I have a question. I would like to know if you have a comprehensive property business plan put in place before we vote? Because to me, it seems like this is premature. If you don't have comprehensive reserves put in place, your county, your staff, and them, this vote seems pretty premature to me.
Okay. So, what's it is, if we have some type of agreement with...
Comprehensive?
A comprehensive, property, property agreement and plan. As far as, I know, we don't, no, because we need the permission first to be able to rent it. If the electors come forward and say, "You can't rent it," then there's, then there would be a...
I would think, I would think the town supervisor presents it.
None has been presented, because we did have permission from the electors to be... That's what I was saying before today. I'd like to endorse her comment, and I was going to ask if there are any guidelines that have been established for the renting of spaces in this facility?
Please state your name before you say...
My name is Carl Darrell.
The president is asking, did any type of plan?
Any kind of, any guidelines that have been developed? I, I had confirmed the remark that it's hard for the electors to make a decision whether or not to rent out facilities, but I don't have some idea of what trustees and supervisor have in mind for its use. There needs to be some dialogue later, but it seems to me to deny all of that. Just a carte blanche, granting authority to, to rent the property is not sufficient. There needs to be something attached, if we do take a vote on this, that there'll be something forthcoming from the trustees and supervisors regarding how the space, what the intentions would be for its use.
Okay.
And that goes back to the plan you have.
All I will say is that with this resolution, you know, from my understanding, you know, nothing's set in stone anyway. If somebody comes in, shows an interest like the Food Pantry or Meals on Wheels, it's still gotta go in front of the supervisor. It still has to go in front of the board of trustees to discuss, you know, if we, if it's a good fit, if it's gonna be allowed, and then we set, you know, what kind of payment, if they're gonna have to cover some type of electrical, you know, part of the bill, pay part of the garbage, and stuff like that. I think they're saying that it's hard, if you didn't know all that without even knowing if we're gonna let it happen.
Well, that's why, that's why I raised the question, are there any guidelines? Because otherwise, you're asking carte blanche power. Pretty much, you do whatever the trustees and supervisors decide they wanna do. And I'm not sure that that is a half the approach to, to the utilization of this space. I mean, we've paid now up to a half million dollars for this in taxpayers. We should probably have some say in how it might be used.
All I could say is that at a meeting, which would be either a workshop or some type of meeting, I'm sure that it would be an open meeting where the citizens would either reach out to the trustees and/or maybe come at that meeting, you know, whether or not they think it's a good idea or a bad idea or...
I'd like to see something more than create the way that the council would call it for consideration. My experience with the workshop sessions and keeping the township meetings is that not all that bulk attendance, and I'm not sure that any input from those who attend at that time would represent anything to the electors at all. Karen, done?
Can I say something? Yeah, it sounds to me like we just developed one of that, and so we have permission from the electorate to rent space out. That each month, people are meeting, and you're welcome to come every month, and, and offer this equipment, like it also is, and it'll be on the agenda. So, it sounds like, once this is approved, if it's not approved today, then they can't rent space out for another year. Is that right? Yes, for the next annual meeting. So, then that's a year without space being rented out. If it is approved, that that can happen, then they can determine what the guidelines are, and I think that's been a conversation, that they're gonna need to do that. It sounds like from the resolution, that it would be a two-step process. First, people would come through, the board would say, "I would like to rent space." They'd talk about the terms. Then they would come back, constantly have these proactive, and they would come up at a meeting to either approve the lease or not have a discussion about it, and include that info. Does that sound like that's what we're looking at here?
That's my understanding of the resolution.
Ma'am?
My name is Fiona Ryan. The lady in the gentleman's here. I have a couple comments about that. Here, our space is a case-by-case basis. Is that somewhat where it's the same as like when it's a case-by-case basis, we do a complaint about something that's new that you're being needed to hear say, for instance, the asphalt is more important than someone's property being plugged by another property that's vacant? I mean, is this something of a case-by-case, you decide on if you wanna act on it or not, or should push inside what's more important, the priority, the matter or the person, or between you?
Okay. The question, from my understanding, is...
Well, I went wrong, case-by-case basis.
Is it gonna be a case-by-case? And that's the way it's written up, and I think what that shows is that like, you know, if a case comes forward, the board, trustees, supervisor, and citizens have an input on that case, and then there'll be a decision to move forward with it or not. And if there's any type of tweaking of it, you know, that's when the citizens and the board have some type of input, I think.
What percentage of the citizens have an input versus the board percentage, as far as something we need to say?
I think it is.
What would you say percentage? You said that many of the citizens have an input. What is the way of the percentage of our input versus the board on a case-by-case basis?
Well, I mean, citizens would come in, press their feelings back. Obviously, it's trustees would be the ones who make the final decision, and the supervisor. But I, I'm sure, believe that they're gonna take the citizens' consent, their consent into consideration.
Another possibility, if there's a number of opinions about whether some organization should come in, or if it's a concern about, I don't know, the type of event and what might occur, whatever the concern might be, that there's an option of creating a workshop to discuss something more thoroughly. You know, so it doesn't have to be just set a month. You know, three people are there that say yes, then one person says, "Well, wait, I have concerns." It doesn't have to be decided, and it could say, "Okay, let's do a workshop and discuss this more further." So, that's an option.
Go ahead, Paul.
So, what I'm hearing so far is we have no guidelines, no property management programs put in place. So, we're gonna leave it, we vote yes to rent the space. We're gonna leave it up to the trustees to put the guidelines together, which then is their responsibility to put the reserves together, do the accounting, everything, and you have, I'm still gonna say. So, you're opening up the, the opportunity for our trustees to say, "Yeah, you can, you can rent space, but you can't. You can rent space, but you can't." Without the guidelines in place, you're opening up the door. The first purpose for the trustees is to mitigate risk. Think about this, guys. You're gonna open up the township to risk again.
Are you gonna open that door?
To risk, to risk. Think about it. Without the guidelines in place, the proper process and procedure, we don't wanna do this again.
Is there very little system to implement for the contractors and tenants to be able for renting space to be bought? Okay.
Is it appropriate to send off a motion to approve the request to rent space? And if so, I'd like to make that motion.
At this time, I'm just here from these other heads up. There are probably utilities, those buildings, products, you do.
Hey, King. Terry Dawes, representing the technical chair of that. One other question I have, and I do believe most of the folks in the room are correct to read this vote so prematurely. We have any qual, any qualifications, any regulations, there was no insurance talked about, you know, what types of parties are you talking, personal people, are you talking only public rentals? Wouldn't it make sense to table this now and have it put together in a comprehensive program or a package of information of what they see is a great way to do it, before you have all these people come into something with an open end and it could be chaos? And again, who you know to get the room right? I think, I think it makes sense here, and I don't know if everybody would agree, to get tabled this until you guys provide us with an outline, something so that we not lie over and over.
Can you answer that question? The moderator could be answering that question.
Actually, it's supposed to be answered shortly.
Well, I...
Motion by the second.
Yes, the second.
Okay, there's a motion by...
It's a big one.
When I finish, will you tell the town that, yeah, which people should want to ask questions?
Sure. And we just brought that out. There was a motion, there's a second. We can have a vote on tableing this indefinitely.
Can we, can we have questions on that?
Well, it should be open and for everybody to be heard. That's the purpose of being there. I have, um, resigning my second, if it, for everybody to speak.
Although we have the word through the president. So, we bring the motion back up, and everybody speaks. We'll continue with Rick.
Um, yes, Mr. Plasky, Chris Hill. What I'm hearing is the, the chicken or the egg, and what comes first, you know, to be able to develop a study and spend money, you better have the approval to do so. But to be able to develop the lease, you better have the mechanics in place to take care of it. So, if there was a motion to be made at all, wouldn't it be more to allow the thought of leasing, however, with a plan and policy in place that would have to be voted on? We put our face in what will be a homogeneous township board, and I think the electorate at that point, if there is structure that's necessary before a lease is signed, if that is incorporated into the motion, I don't think we have to wait another year, because it'll be a year before we bring it up. And I think these places that will sit without use, that's not working for us either. But if you go ahead and say, "Okay, you know, let me think about, let you go with the rental space," providing you have, as part of the motion, a structured policy that incorporates the mechanics that you wish to use to allow space to be leased.
But shouldn't we be able to vote on that structured policy? I agree with Ray 100%. That's what we're asking here, is for you to create a structured policy, so we know who we're voting on. Right now, it's just, why do...
Why do we have to wait a whole year?
But you don't have to spend money putting a policy this, putting that, putting the guidelines together next year. What's the meaning of that? There's nothing else paper.
Sure, we need one part of the motion.
Yeah, one person.
Right.
Will you hold on one second and let this be better said and come in?
I don't know. I don't understand why we have to wait a whole year in order to have such a plan and to vote. Why couldn't the plan be developed during the next quarter and voted on at the next township meeting? Is there anything that we're...
No, we haven't heard of a year, and that's when it's voted on.
That's when what's voted on.
How far is it to the elector? Should we do anything that won't be heard?
That's wrong.
It's an annual town meeting that takes place once a year for the purpose of voting and things that are presented annually in January. So, voting, this meeting in this form has all been happened once a year. I'm quite a bit curious.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, and this is already a state...
You could call a special town meeting.
Yes. A vote being taken at the next township meeting. Is that what you're saying? The annual town meeting is for the electors of the township. It's an annual town meeting. If you were to table this today, there would need to be a special meeting then set with notice sent or available for all, to those same electors to come forward. It's not something that then the township board can vote on, because it's not been given to them at that point for them to consider. The electors make the decision whether their buildings can be rented.
So, a special meeting is involved, is my understanding.
Yeah. Just to make it clear, I'm hoping that everybody has the resolution in front of them, and had an opportunity to actually read it. I would direct your attention to paragraph three. It says in... Some of the points that some of the persons who have spoken have mentioned is, "I cannot see a circumstance where the board is going to approve a lease that has no provision for insurance, based upon the fact that paragraph three says that that has to be taken into account." So, the concern about recent handling, I think, has been addressed. Addressing the hours of operation, so that you don't have a tenant who anticipates utilizing the building when the security is not available, that you have days of operation, so that it won't again. If there are additional fees, costs, and expenses with operating when the rest of the township offices are not being utilized, that will be taken into account by the township board in finalizing a lease. The rental rate, that's similar purpose to Dr. who talked about potentially having a two-tiered, three-tiered, 75-tiered, whatever number of tiers you'd like, system for determining how much the rental rate will be. Security for the space, that's also, I would presume, a concern of the electors. So, that's also within paragraph three. Quite honestly, this was discussed before the letter was sent to ask for permission. The statute makes it very clear that no action can be taken with your building unless until the electors say that we can. So, to then go through the fees, costs, and expenses, to set up a management proposal, and all the other plan that was suggested, I, in my humble opinion, and this is only my opinion, this has nothing to do with anything other than my opinion, I think we would be faced with similar objections, saying, "Why did you township spend $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, $7,000 coming up with a plan before you asked us whether you could rent it?" So, now we're faced with some comments being, "Why are you proceeding since you are, why are you trying to prevent it without getting ghosted and things in line?" It wouldn't be mad, in my opinion, whether we did the program before and then presented you with the program, or if we're doing as we're doing now, saying, "We're not gonna do any of that, because there's no reason to do any of that," if the electors say, "Don't rent the building." So, and also in the answer to the questions concerning your input, you elected the township board. You elected, you tell you, elected officials who will be serving for the next four years. Every single one of these on a case-by-case basis will have to be wrong for that same township board that you elected. That's why you elected them. You are absolutely welcome to come to any meeting. Nobody's going to be able to simply walk into any one of the township meetings and say, "Hey, I wanna rent the space tomorrow. Can I please rent the space tomorrow? Decide for me, approve it, and I get to rent it tomorrow." Not gonna happen. Can't happen, because there has to be a notice provided to the electors, to the voters, to the board, so that it can be posted for a public meeting. So, there has to be a notice. They can't come in at the last minute and expect to be able to rent it if and back the electors say that we can rent this building. There will be a procedure. Minimally, we have to follow the law. If this group suggests to the township board, "Why don't you have a workshop on that?" Please do that. Ask your elected officials to do that. Have them set one up. Please know, there's no reason to do that if at its base level, this group decides that this building will not be rented to anyone.
You said, there will be a procedure, if I quote you correctly?
Procedure for...
For renting the facility? I, I didn't understand what you meant by that comment.
Just as with any action that's taken by the township board, there's a procedure. You can't affect change in the township by simply showing up at a township meeting at the regular sample time and say, "I all of a sudden want you to do this." That may be under new business. There's a procedure for that, which has been in place since the beginning of time. So, it's not as if, even if the electors approve this, it's not as if all of a sudden, the township board would be able to simply say to anybody who came, "Here, you could use this building, because you came in today and asked for it to use it tomorrow." There still has to be notice. There still has to be a resolution presented. There still has to be a lease, a proposed lease, attached to that proposed resolution, which is then going to be discussed, reviewed, and voted upon. And in the 25-plus years that I've been here, even if there's one person who's coming in and saying, "Hey, I don't agree with this. Here's a concern or a question I have," far more often than that person wasn't listening to you. May not mean that you got exactly what you asked for, but you absolutely got this. You absolutely were considered before the elected officials made a decision. So, there is a procedure.
Was this resolution posted on the website?
It was.
There's not anything to bother you.
Okay.
You know, let's make, let's not make this more difficult than it is. Is it a good idea for us to make some income from this building and give an opportunity for some great organizations like the Food Pantry, Meals on Wheels, to utilize the space that's here? I would hope everybody would agree that that's a good idea. Are there lots of terms and conditions that need to be attached with? Sure, maybe. But let's go forward and say, "Yes, we think it's a good idea for you to rent this building." Period. That's all we're saying. The rest of it, we're gonna leave for another discussion. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to rent space in this building.
You've already got a motion.
And I'd just like to make a comment. I'm not against war or against, I, I just think we need to do it properly. I have a 49-page document, a sample property management agreement on what should be done, not a four-point resolution to rent a property.
But if that four-point resolution isn't approved, your 49 pages aren't worth a bag of twerking.
We need to do it correctly. We don't need to do it half-assed, point blank. We need to do it correctly going forward.
I think I have a motion on the floor.
There was a motion.
Hold on, I'm still ahead. I have another question.
Well, discussion on the motion.
I have another question. And I, I fully support renting this space out. I believe that we don't know how much this space is gonna cost the taxpayers per, per monthly budget. And so, to not rent it out, I agree that we would, we would probably, it would cost us more money to keep the lights on and keep the building going for the 12 cars a week that are in the lot, right? But at the same time, because we're so new in the building, we have no idea what you even charge people, because we have no budget of what this building will actually cost us during the summer months of air conditioning, or in the winter months of cold or, 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 you know, heating. So, when Ray mentioned that these things come once a year, is there any way we can split this up and say, for nonprofit groups like Meals on Wheels, which is a great group, and of course, the Food Bank, which is another great nonprofit, can we split this up and say, put these rules to use for the active groups that already have existing things happening here in Lockwood? So, what we're doing is, we're relocating something we already support, right? Is there a way we can split this up to say that we're gonna, we're gonna utilize these for nonprofits, because they're already here, they've already submitted? But for the private rentals, for the, for the non-governmental or non, for nonprofit rentals, maybe we could wait a year. Maybe we could separate using this big space for weddings or, or an anniversary or stuff like that. Maybe we could wait a year and develop a comprehensive plan for an ancillary liquor license, and talking about the insurance writers. These things take time to develop. 49 pages, you said?
49.
I don't think, I, I, I think there's a solution. I agree that these people, the Food Bank, I work in a Food Bank myself, I know how important they are. Is there a way, can we make a motion to split them up and say, "Let's, let's activate them, seven important ones right now, but let's pull back the reins just a little bit on the private rentals for a year." We re-enter this next year after we've already developed a contract, kinda oversee the budget for a year, and know what it actually costs to rent during the winter, during the summer, during the fall, spring. These things all matter. I, I come from a construction background, so I understand what you guys paid there, that's gonna be completely different than what you guys are gonna have to adjust to here. And I'm sure you guys have already seen that in bits and pieces. So, I was hoping that maybe we could just pull back a little bit. Not eliminate, but, but actually be effective by utilizing those rooms, like Ray said, the letter said, "That doesn't make any sense for anybody." Put the, put the, throw the baby out the bathwater and leave this open window for all kinds of different things, with nobody knowing. That's where this year could help us. Maybe we could utilize the nonprofit groups for the first year, that type of, of schedule, and then, and then develop into a private contract, where you might be able to have weddings and, and different types of, uh, parties here.
How about this, sir? Your comments is valid, but since that, what you're talking about is in fact, it's on the agenda. With all due respect, we have to go forward with what's actually on the agenda. When it was presented at the township board, it's a township board at reading, where this was placed on the agenda, it was posted, where it was supposed to be posted, saying that this is the request for the agenda for the annual town meeting. As all of you know in this room, township government is absolutely different than anything else, any other type of government, so there are certain rules and regulations that have to be followed. That procedure was followed to have this placed on the agenda for tonight. There are no other items for the agenda tonight. Once again, I absolutely understand what you're saying, and I commend you, and I believe you're right and correct. That's why the resolution was presented as it is, with a case-by-case basis. I may suggest to you that a couple of months before we even came up with this, that's when Meals on Wheels came forward, that's when the Food Pantry came forward, and we had to tell them, "No, you can't, we can't do anything, because we don't have permission to even speak with you yet." The case-by-case basis, I believe, is the same protection that's been requested, which is if you have somebody who comes in and who wants to use it for a non-profit-making group, that's where your township board is going to look at that group and say, "Well, here's a, here's a parameter we're going to set for you." Maybe at that point, we're not gonna be able to allow you to simply have this space without taking care of the electrical, taking care of the extra insurance that will be required, taking care of any extra, any other fees, costs, and expenses that this township board, if the electors allow, we think they have it. The township board could then say... The township board could then say, if you're a nonprofit, here are certain things that you're not going to have to pay because you're a nonprofit. It doesn't make sense for a taxi body to charge another taxi body for certain things. But if it's a for-profit, well, you know what? Then perhaps the township board will then say, if it's for-profit, then you should take those things.
I could just ask you a question before you move on. It seems to be, listening to, and I thoroughly understand what you're saying, that it has to be on the agenda prior to being here, but it would seem to me it would have made more sense to have a public hearing before you put that agenda together, because it seems there's a lot of feelings in this crowd, maybe to and fro. It would have made more sense to open up a public hearing before you created the agenda, I'm sorry, the motion? Because then people could have put their thoughts in when we're just getting your guys' thoughts in for, for paragraphs. I, I think we got, I think we're all on the same page that the building needs to be utilized. So I hope that everybody will, will get to that part.
Just a kind of me, a very point to make it out there. I mean, obviously, this is the starting point, and, you know what, we do have a board now that has, to read your point, right, that has a balanced voice for everyone. And so in those workshops and sitting in those, obviously, most details have to be discussed and voted on, I know, but with a balanced voice, I mean, obviously, there's not going to be any detail that you're not discussing or that we're not discussing, or anyways.
Would you please do the workshops that are non-governmental, is the public, can the public, the public can sit in a workshop? Where do you, where do you get the awareness to be workshop?
I would say trust the trustees.
Because it's, they're posted this thing, which is your ability, or shooting country meetings.
I'm sorry, I appreciate it. And if the scheduling exists and what the workshop's on and such.
Well, it's in the, just generally speaking, just sort of, everybody's on the same page. You said if a workshop is called, it's usually all trustee may suggest it, then the supervisor will take that account, ask the rest of the board if they're interested in having a workshop. Once again, far more often than not, everyone is in agreement, or certainly the majority of the board is in agreement, yeah, this board's a workshop, let's set it. And then, at least the times that I sat there at the meeting, it's been, they all looked to the right because that's where the calendar was in the old place, and said, well, it's a good date for everybody to show up, and we're going to have a workshop on that date.
Can a workshop be, can a workshop be requested by the public at any time?
To that date, it is not. However, you, once again, not to be the dead worst, but clearly, the electors have selected those people who are the elected officials, you go directly to anyone of your employees.
Thank you.
Is this resolution amended now by us?
If you were to have a motion seconded and it was approved, then we would be able to amend it. I believe there's already a motion on the floor that's consecutive to approve it as it is.
Well, but that prevents any possibility of making any amendment before?
No, only if it's voted down.
Only if it, yes, but if it's voted down, it's a done deal, and there's no opportunity at that point.
Well, but actually, no, sir. If this is still the discussion on a motion to approve it as presented and seconded yesterday, this is still the discussion at that point. If your views were persuasive to be second or to first, and say, would you consider amending it to say this? The second could say yes, the first could say yes, and then the motion would proceed with whatever amendment you had suggested.
What I've heard from the input here is that there is sentiment for the idea of moving forward with this for nonprofits, but that more deliberation is needed, a plan is needed with regard to renting of this space for, for profit organizations. And I don't see why this couldn't be amended to accommodate that sentiment. And if we do it up and down now, and...
I, I believe, I believe the resolution as written calls for that. I, you know, again, I don't want to make this any more complicated than we have to. Should they rent it? Yes. The resolution says they have to develop a bunch of stuff and take care of a bunch of the detail.
It doesn't say anything about developing any kind of plan or guideline or proper management going on.
I believe in, of Article Three, it says, "The supervisor shall determine with input from the board and any proposed tenant, the parameters of the space, need for the storage space, the hours of operation, days of operation, the rental rate, the conditions of liability, security for the space, as well as any other issues and concerns." That's pretty broad.
And that is done on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
Which means that the conditions can vary from situation to situation?
Absolutely.
Without any kind of overriding guidance?
And you open yourself up to this discrimination. Yes, you will. You need to have a plan placed before.
Aren't we putting the cart away, way before the horse? We're not even giving them permission to rent it yet. All I'm saying is, yes, you can rent it. Now develop some rules and regulations. That's basically what this says. And if we don't say yes, you know, Meals on Wheels and the Food Pantry and the others will continue to wait. And I think that's patently unfair.
This doesn't say develop rules anyway.
I think a part of it says, as well as any other issues and concerns, that relate to finalizing a lease with a proposed tenant.
On a case-by-case basis?
Yes. If you're cooking food in here, it's a whole lot different than if you're storing food in here. You know, those are different cases.
Can we call the question, and what motion is on the floor for the approval of the motion to approve the resolution as presented and seconded? You now have a motion to call the question? You need a second, and that motion is second. There's a second? Then we need to have a vote on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question, please signify by saying aye, raising your hand in the air. So you can...
Just to call a question, which means that that will vote on whether the resolution passes. So those in favor signify by throwing your hand in the air. What do we forget? All vote? Just seven, it passes. The question is to be called. The motion, the second word to approve the resolution as presented, all in favor, please All opposed? Resolution number two zero one seven, that's due, passed. We're going into approval of the minutes from the previous annual town meeting. Everybody could have received a copy of the last year's minutes when they walked in and they were posted. The motion to approve those minutes. So move. Got a motion by Grace Clinskey, second by Chris Piazza. All in favor of approval of the minutes? We need to show hands. Very good second voice. Voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the approval of the minutes passed. Next is, I need a motion to dispense with the reading of the full financial report. Got a motion, got a motion by Deb Mason. Need a second. Second by Barbara Voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a, that? Moving on, we need a motion to accept the financial report. Need a motion to accept the financial report.
So move.
I got a motion by Ken Griffin. Need a second. Second by Mary Ann Williamson. All in favor to accept the financial report? Please respond with aye.
Aye.
Moving on, we already passed the resolution. Need a motion to set the time and date for the next annual town meeting. Need a motion for that? Motion made by Barbara Voice, second. Second by Mrs. Delaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Delaney, sorry, I need a date. It says, oh, it's the second Tuesday in April, and the time, we did a time. Usually it's eleven at six-thirty, so it's a better left than thirty. Second Tuesday in April, which is, I believe, April tenth, twenty eighteen.
Okay, for that date for the next town meeting, that would be April tenth, twenty eighteen, at six-thirty PM in this building. Moving on. Any other miscellaneous matters to discuss? I'll wrap my last one.
And now we begin to talk about the culverts and the flooding in Fairmont.
I believe that we could better address at our, at our town meeting, our monthly meeting that we have here. I know at the last meeting which I was at, there was a discussion, reference of refuge down in that area, and I know flooding was brought up. This, this setting here is not for that. I mean, obviously, you are welcome to come to our meetings and, that will be discussed. Anyone else would comment? Sir?
Are these, are these in any paper, like the Herald News or anything? Way beforehand, so people can really read them and see what's on these things? What if you don't have a computer at home or whatever?
So, sir, the agendas are posted in the Herald News and also the Labor Record, and then they're posted in five of the most prominent places in the township, and then everything else is online for anybody. The resolution was online, the minutes were online, and financial report.
You don't get this information in there on those though?
No.
That's what he's asking.
No, you cannot publish minutes, and, and he'll not do that until they're approved. So these went out as, as drafts on the website.
Can maybe they're up here?
They also can be picked up there, yes.
It seems like you could post a financial report in the paper. What if somebody doesn't have, have a computer?
So after it is approved, it does get, it does get put in the newspaper.
That's a lot of the...
The bookkeeper does that, and I really bet that's not part of my duties.
So can, can a copy of that be picked up at this location?
Way beforehand?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, yes. Anything can be, anything can be foiled from the township.
No, they don't need to foil it. I mean, they're just looking for a chance to look at them.
Or else you do a full, after the financial part, after this financial report, there's a full audit that is done, a township audit. That is definitely put in the newspaper.
What about the budget?
I think what you were saying, you were saying you would have to be foiled, a FOIA request would have to be made beforehand to get a copy.
No, that's, this is, for the annual town meeting, it is attainable.
Any of the township meetings you get to foil, so if you want any information on any of the trustee township meetings you have to foil, you have to write it to the township board to Denise. So if you want to know each month, you have to foil it, and they'll send it.
The agenda and the minutes are online, right, for the trustee?
The agenda doesn't say nothing.
The detail that the trustees get is not online, but the minutes and the agendas
Any other comments at this time?
You know, mostly, you probably know I'm an elected official. Our numbers are in the phone book, as all are the township officials. If you have questions on this stuff, or if you want a better explanation, or if there's something that you want one of the township board members to bring up at a meeting, call them up and talk to them about it. I mean, we're not in some high tower somewhere. You elected us, and this is our job. And so I encourage you to contact your elected officials and talk about your problems or questions with us, because that's what we're here for.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sprenger told me there was a green, was it station where they had their lights on, and it was a half-hour bulb, anybody has a...
I have jumper cables if it's still on.
Any other matters?
I just, throw them out a couple, please. I guess my question would be, in regards to the building, as far as other entities that approached the township government, other than Meals on Wheels and the Food Pantry, that are for-profit enterprises, have any of them approached the township in regards to potentially leasing that space over? And then I got another...
Right, I can answer that. Just yesterday, we had seven requests for the building. One was from our Park District, the Redwood Park District. Other one was from different organizations. There is a church that wants to rent out this, this community center on Sundays. So there have been numerous requests for use of this building.
I'm asking you in regards to for-profit entities that are not...
Oh, I'm sorry. Better, better.
Okay. I guess the, to go off of the comment of elected officials are here to serve you, ideally, that's the case, but I think the people in Fremont might disagree with that. I know I've been to several of these meetings here, and it sounds like a lot of the issues still haven't been addressed. And, yeah, people are here to serve you, or elected officials are supposed to do that, but that's not always the case, and I think that's why there's such a spirited debate here tonight, as to just one of the issues that was put up before all this here today.
Well, you know, I would say that several of the trustees are here at the meeting tonight.
One other, one other little thing since we've been talking, being an elected official, can he make the motions and everything? He already, it seemed like he's already pushing for the Food Bank or whatever to get the one kitchen that's here. What if my, my restaurant want to cook from there or something, you know? So, I don't understand that. This should be for people who are not elected to make those motions and motions and seconds.
I'm a resident of the township.
Also, but you are an elected official also. But you're going to vote on what, you know, what's, what's going to happen.
So you can have your input too.
Not as much as an elected official, of course. Because he goes to the next one. I don't.
Welcome to your next town meeting. Motion by Chris Piazza, second by Barbara Voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.